At this time, we'll call to order the regular meeting of common council. This is July 16th, 2024. Carrie, roll please.
Alderperson Carpenter.
Here.
Essercon.
Here.
Gantz.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Condegar.
Here.
Ledvina.
Here.
Pirock.
Here.
Quigley.
Here.
And Mayor Boyd.
I am here, thank you. Item two, pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clearly, it doesn't start until I say something. All right. Up next. Item three, approval of the minutes of the June 18th, 2024 common council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, second by Alderperson Ledvina. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Item four, public hearing to act on the request for zoning amendment from MX-3 corridor mixed-use district to C Commercial District at 2385 Lawrence Drive, parcel WDL 487. Will the clerk please read the notice to the public hearing?
The notice was published in the Press Times on June 28th and July 5th, 2024.
Thank you. Recommendation from Plan Commission, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. The item in front of you tonight, as you mentioned, is a rezoning request from an applicant to go from the MX-3 category to the Commercial District category. The Plan Commission heard from the applicant as well as from staff, and a important part to note about this one is the reason why this was on MX-3 to start is because the use that is onsite at the time of our new zoning code, which was a landscape supply business or landscaper, was not a category that we had in our code, so we tried to find a zoning district that best fit at the time. Well, since that time, we've actually added that category to our code, and therefore, the applicant is requesting to be placed into that category. It was a Commercial District back under our old code, but because it didn't match the new code, that was the closest that we came. So at this point, the applicant is requesting to go from that MX-3 category back to that Commercial District category. Plan Commission heard from the applicant and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you very much. At this time, I declare the public hearing open, and if anyone wants to speak on this item on the agenda, now is your time. Anyone in person or virtually want to speak on this item on the agenda while the public hearing is open? If so, just state your name. For the second time, while the public hearing is open on item four regarding the mixed-use district, please state your name if you want to speak on this item. For the third and final time, while the public hearing is open on this item on the agenda, please state your name. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Hanson, second by Alderperson Gantz. Discussion or comments? Alderperson Carpenter.
Yes, if we go to the neighbors' letters in that in there, and these people ask for those trees to be taken down many times, that's along those fence line and everything there. I even went out there and spoke to this, that business, a couple of years ago, and now they want things rezoned and changed for their benefit, but they never helped out their neighbors in the past, and I'm not for that. They had dead trees and...
I think Dan has an answer for that one.
I'll make a clarification on that one. The business has been sold, and the new owner is trying to make improvements to the site, and therefore, to make those improvements to the site, you have to be conforming, and therefore, they are trying to come into compliance. There is a site plan that is included inside of your packet for the next item that documents all those improvements, and replacing trees and adding the appropriate amount of screening and all that stuff is included as a requirement of that conditional use permit. So clarification there.
So it will be taken care of.
The dead trees will be taken care of, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Item five, public hearing to act on the request for a conditional use of landscape materials and supplies at 2385 Lawrence Drive, parcel WDL 487. Will the clerk read the notice to the public hearing?
The public hearing notice was published in the Press Times on June 28th and July 5th, 2024.
Thank you. Recommendation from Plan Commission, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the next step in the process, I guess you would say, for this applicant, and it's to go through the conditional use permit process. The state, several years ago, crafted the conditional use permit language to be more restrictive to pretty much the conditions that are listed inside of your zoning ordinance. So earlier this year, the Plan Commission and council crafted specific ordinances and specific sections of our zoning code to meet the, to what a landscape supply business would have to follow, and that's what is on your screen as well as in your packet. The applicant has provided their information stating that they will meet those conditions, and as such, therefore, the Plan Commission heard from the applicant, and as long as they meet those conditions, they are kind of greenlit to be in approval for a conditional use permit. That was kind of one of the main changes that came from the state. So that's the reason why those standards have been crafted the way they are. They're very specific to being able to protect the neighborhood and the neighboring properties, and like I said, the applicant has stated their desire to comply with those standards. And so as a result, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you very much. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item on the agenda. If anyone wants to speak on this item, number five, now is your time, please state your name, either virtually or in person. For the second time, the public hearing is open on item five, now is your time to speak, state your name. For the third and final time, while the public hearing is open on item five, now is your time, please state your name. I declare the public hearing closed and would entertain a motion.
I'll make a...
Go ahead. I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Gantz, I'll read on that one, second by Alderperson Ledvina. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Item six, public comment upon matters not on the agenda. Comments made during the public comment period shall pertain only to matters under the jurisdiction of the common council. Anyone in person or virtually have any public comments upon matters not on the agenda? If so, just state your name. For the second time, any public comment upon matters not on the agenda, now is your time. For the third and final time, public comment upon matters not on the agenda, this is your time to speak. Very good, thank you. Item seven, proclamation for the continuation of the Green Tier Legacy Community Program. I shall read. Proclamation, DePere is continuing their Green Tier Legacy Program, that's the title. Whereas the City of DePere is continuing our commitment to the Green Tier Legacy Program through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and whereas, the City of DePere is part of a select group of Wisconsin local governments that are dedicated to sustainable improvements, and whereas, DePere is prioritizing city environmental initiatives through the creation of the Sustainability Commission, and whereas, DePere is enhancing the health of citizens and its landscapes by banning the use of coal tar and high poly...
Ciclic.
Ciclic. Got to read these things prior. Aromatic hydrocarbon sealants in construction. I got the rest. Adopting a planned natural landscaping ordinance and adopting a clean energy resolution, and whereas, DePere is promising sustainable practices throughout the community by adopting a clean air initiative and partnering with Green Bay Compost to offer city-funded composting. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the City of DePere, declare our continued commitment to minimize environmental impacts and make DePere a quality city to live in. Proclamation, DePere is continuing their Green Tier Legacy Program. Thank you. Yay to everybody. Any comments on that at all? All right. Very good, thank you. Item eight, recommendation from Plan Commission to approve a 10-lot extraterritorial preliminary plot of Little Rapid Subdivision at 1602 Torchwood in Lawrence, parcels L 2279, L 2295.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Hanson, second by Alderperson Gantz. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Item nine, recommendation from the Board of Park Commissioners to approve bid for poured-in-place playground surfacing from Blumels in the amount of $51,770 for Willem's Playground.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Ledvina, second by Alderperson Quigley. Questions or comments? Alderperson Hanson.
Just wondering about this language on the memo about the surfacing could be either poured-in-place or turf. My understanding is that all the playgrounds going forward are going to be poured-in-place only?
Marty.
So when we sent the bid out, we allowed vendors to bid either in poured-in-place or turf. The turf is essentially the same, the same type of fall surface, it's just that the cover is astral turf. So same cushion, same reflex, everything, but the poured-in-place from Blumels came in, well, the only bid that came in, so.
Okay.
So we would take both, though.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. All good?
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Seeing there are none, roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Carpenter.
Aye.
Essercon.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Condegar.
Aye.
Ledvina.
Aye.
Pirock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 10, recommendation from the Board of Public Works on Award of Contract 2414, French Road Water Main Relocation to Kelman Engross LLC in the amount of $262,455.94.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, second by Alderperson Pirock. Discussion or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Essercon.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Condegar.
Aye.
Ledvina.
Aye.
Pirock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 11, recommendation from the Board of Public Works on Award of Contract 2422, Pond Dredging to Northeast Asphalt in the amount of $76,550.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Pirock, second by Alderperson Carpenter. Discussion or comments? Alderperson Hanson.
Just for the record, it was discussed at the Board of Public Works, that the memo mentions sediment accumulating 14 inches since the pond's construction in 2021, it was actually constructed many years before that.
Very good, thank you. And the director also concurs. Thank you for that. Other question, questions or comments? Seeing there are none, roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Gantz.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Condegar.
Aye.
Ledvina.
Aye.
Pirock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Essercon.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Condegar.
Aye.
Ledvina.
Aye.
Pirock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Essercon.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 12, consideration and possible action on information technology acquisition for Nelson Pavilion from ACP Creative IT LLC, camera corner connecting point, or CC CP.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Carpenter, second by Alderperson Gantz. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, all, roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Hanson.
Aye.
Condegar.
Aye.
Ledvina.
Aye.
Pirock.
Aye.
Quigley.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Essercon.
Aye.
Gantz.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 13, presentation and possible action on the 2023 management letter and financial statements. I'm going to kick this out right now to Pam. It's all yours, Pam Manley.
All right, so at Finance, we had some draft financial statements, as we didn't have the final ones yet. So last Wednesday, we had the final ones come in, and that is what I presented to you this morning here. So you've got that on your desk. It also was included in the packet, and with me today is Elizabeth McMasters from CLA to review or answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, thank you. Elizabeth.
Hi, thanks, everybody. So we spoke with Finance, as Pam said, last Wednesday. I won't go into all those details tonight. I'll just touch on some of the highlights. If you look at the loose packet, that should be at the very back of the financial statements, this is really the meat, but everything is summarized into this packet. So if there's anything that you kind of look over, this really gives a high-level version of everything in the audit report. On page one, this is the executive summary, couple of the highlights. We issued what's known as a clean audit report. That is the highest mark that you can get, or an unmodified opinion. We believe these financial statements are materially correct. That doesn't mean that we're going to find every little error that's throughout these financial statements, but we use a risk-based approach, and we believe these are materially correct to be making decisions on, and so on. In terms of internal controls, last year, if you were to compare this page to last year's report, there was actually one additional finding, so one of them dropped off. That's because of the work of Pam and everybody else in Finance. They clarified that. The first one on here is the preparation of the annual report. We have that one in about 99% of the audits that we do across the state of Wisconsin. The benefit versus cost in order to have the knowledge and know-how to put the financial statements together, it just really doesn't make sense, so I would expect that that finding would continue for the foreseeable future. The second finding relates to just a tweak in the internal control structure that the city had. City is obviously going through hundreds, if not thousands, of compliance requirements at any given point, at any given time, with all the different grants and the state requirements and so on. So that's just a tweak that we noted as we were testing a program this year. It's also a common one that sometimes comes and goes depending on what grants the city has at any given time. So nothing major there. Page two, this is one of the formal required communications. Basically, what I want to say about this is that if you haven't heard from us ahead of this point in time, there's really no news is good news, right? This is all just routine language that must go in the letter. Skipping ahead to the financial information, that is starting on page nine. It's helpful to compare last year's balances versus this year's balances. I won't go into these too much, but in terms of the general fund, the unassigned category is what the reserves are for rainy days, more or less. You can see that those unassigned funds had a boost this year, largely due to investment income. We saw that across everywhere. The market just had a great year, and so overall, fund balance increased 9%. A large portion of that was the investment income. I know that we've talked with Pam. There's a couple of things that, you know, might eat into that. I believe, what is it, FIRE is still...
Union contract.
Is settling the union contracts, so there might be back pay with those types of items. So there's some items that might eat into that a little bit, but at least there's a boost for this year to report. So that's positive news. And then down in the capital projects funds, obviously, those are all set up for different purposes. One item that I wanted to highlight, if you see towards the bottom, there's a deficit in the Public Improvements Fund of about 2.2 million at the end of 2023. The reason for this was largely due to timing of when developer payments were being made. There were some agreements written, and the city has already received those funds in 2024, so that deficit will actually disappear if we were to run these numbers for today. So those are just a couple of the high points. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Alderperson Hanson.
Just wondering on that same page about the deficit for pool capital projects.
For pool capital projects, so is that, I think that's one that you guys have been kind of watching, and I don't remember exactly what was going on.
We continue to get our referendum funds that help cover that debt that we had for the pool purchase.
Oh, it's from the original bonds we issued for the VFW?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on the audit? Alderperson Carpenter.
So on page 14 of that, if we get to the water utility?
Yes.
So in 2022, it was, I assume that's $4,679,000. And then in '23, it's $5,197,000.
So that's what the water department owes unassigned reserves right now?
Correct, yes. And that's something that the water utility went through the rate case, and when are those rates in effect?
The rates took effect this year, already in June.
This year, in June, yep.
So that should help, but...
Yeah, it's going to take time for those deficits to, you know, whittle down, I guess. But at this time, the other utility funds that have cash are supplementing that, so it's, you know, not that there's no cash there.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Just say it increased from the year before, and now hopefully it's, will go down a little bit.
Larry can just add a touch more, too.
Well, the other thing, we've talked about this in the past, the PSC really restricts what we can do for rate increases based on, they don't really take the deficit into consideration. As far as they're concerned, it doesn't exist, I guess.
Yes.
And so what we need to do is, we'll have to bond money in the future to essentially pay back the other funds, and then have that debt in the water utility, and then go forward with rate increases through the PSC to offset that, that they'll agree to, and allow us to increase the rates and take that into consideration. That's the only way we can get rid of the deficit, so that's where we're at.
Alderperson Carpenter.
So my question on that bonding issue, if we go to that process, can you bond it incrementally? I mean that you...
We can structure it however we want.
I'm just going to say that it wouldn't be a significant rate increase. I mean, always going to have rate increases, but if you took the whole $5 million and put it in the bond, that rate increase would definitely go to a...
Probably what you want to do is develop a strategy on what you're comfortable with for asking for rate increases with the PSC. Again, it's money that we owe ourselves to the other utilities, so you can structure it and take whatever time you want to pay that back. And so if you want to borrow $1 million a year for five years, or $500,000 a year for 10 years, or however you want to lay it out, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments while we have Elizabeth here? Or Pam? Anything else you want to add, either of you?
I'd like to just thank everybody at the city. It's a joy to come here and do the audit. I know that we ask tons of questions, and Pam and everyone within that department, everybody at the city in general, is always working to get to the bottom of anything that we raise, and, you know, we're able to have this audit issued significantly earlier this year, and then also, we were able to get through a single audit. So it was doubled down in our efforts this year, and they got every question that we raised answered, so.
That is great to hear, so kudos to everyone involved. Any other questions or comments?
Is it really a joy?
Yeah. I will say that.
I guess that would be a comment, would it not?
Yeah.
Is it really a joy?
She is a resident of the City of DePere.
So I care about this.
Oh, wow, wow. There, done. How can you not approve this or make a motion? That said, we do need a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderperson Ledvina, seconded by Alderperson Condegar, and I'm assuming the motion would state something to the effect of approving the management letter and financial statements?
Yes.
Correct?
That's what he said.
I must have missed that part. I was still laughing at Alderperson Pirock, which I do a lot anyways. That said, this is not a roll call, correct? That said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Elizabeth, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So we have to vote between you and Scott now, who we like better as far as the presentation? Okay, all right.
Elizabeth.
Noted.
I'll report back.
All right, yeah. Tell them you won that, you won that contest. Thank you very much. Item 14, ordinance 2414 amending section 32 of the DePere Municipal Code regarding park regulations.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Ledvina, seconded by Alderperson Pirock. Discussion or comments? Alderperson Hanson.
It references lying dogs in general open grass areas. I assume that would not include, like, the disc golf course at Legion Park?
Well, I think we'll bring Marty up here to get clarification on that, and he's happily sauntering up.
With how the ordinance is written, I would interpret the disc golf course as an active playing field. I will fully admit, I think that might be a little bit harder to regulate than what a soccer field would be, but I would interpret the disc golf course as an active playing field.
It does say sports fields not allowed, but...
So would you want, would they need an amendment on that to make sure it's clarified, or just go with it?
I think we consider it like a sport field, yeah.
And do it that way, and then, okay.
And then, I do like we have the language in here about the dog owner or handler must clean up after the dog. Just wondering if there's any kind of sanctions to enforce that, though? Like, if we, if police department or police officer found somebody not cleaning up, what would the process be?
Boy.
Are there fines?
There'd be a citation on it.
Yeah, I would...
Just looking through the ordinance, there doesn't appear to be a penalty section, but we do have a general ordinance that allows for citations and penalties for ordinance violations.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I didn't see anything about citations in here, so...
Other questions or comments? Alderperson Carpenter.
What created this, all of a sudden wanting a change in what other communities are sized? Are they like this?
What was the first part?
What's creating this change? I mean...
Yeah, so this has been talked about off and on, and I'll be honest, I can't go back in time and remember the exact moment that it came up, but I know the Park Board has talked about it. We've actually done a community survey about how people feel about dogs in the parks, and that came back. That came back with a pretty significant majority, if I remember, of people being more apt to having dogs in the park than not in the park. So I think it was a gradual movement, I would say, over the past two years, that we've been talking about it off and on, and then we finally pulled the trigger on it. In the second part of the question...
I was just wondering, are other communities our size?
So our communities, our size, I guess I can't speak for with regards to around the state. However, we did talk with a number of the communities regionally. So we talked with the Shawmanon, we talked with Bellevue, Ledgeview, Aloe, Green Bay. Most of the communities have an ordinance in place that allows dogs in their parks in some capacity. Like, Green Bay has a little bit unique one where they can be in the parks, but only in a pass-through type of environment, meaning on a trail, walking through a park. Aloe, I do believe they allow dogs on leashes, similar to what we are doing. So we didn't go to, like, around the state, like, City of Nina, other side, but we surveyed the communities that are immediately in our neck of the woods here.
So next question, we have activities, the Beer Garden, let's say, celebrate down in Voyager. People can have dogs in all around when there's that abundance of people? People can have dogs in all around when there's that, that abundance of people.
Voyager already allows.
Yeah, and Voyager allows dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm just.
Yep.
Which I guess leads to what you're trying to, is it, is it working out okay in Voyager Park would be something I think would be a follow-up. It's going okay, right, with the dogs allowed in Voyager?
Um, we.
I'm just pointing off of yours here.
We haven't had, no matter which way you go, there is always gonna be some type of problem. We haven't had many, um, documented cases of problems down at Voyager Park since dogs have been allowed. We've been out there and people have decided to, um, take their dog to the park and let them run off the leash, so then we have to go and talk to them. So we, we have moments like that, but we haven't had any major, uh, problems of people calling and complaining.
I don't recall with the beer gardens, any issues at all. Um, we're all down there. Larry?
Yeah, I, the only complaint we got was one recently where somebody complained about Stanley, our dog, down there, and another dog down there on the leash approaching people. Um, that, that's the only complaint that I've gotten from Voyager Park.
I mean, the only reason I bring it up, I, I know there's people that are definitely afraid of dogs, and you know what I mean, so now you have, you're walking your dog, I mean, oh, it's on a leash, but. I'm just bringing it up. I, I don't know why we. I will guess I won't make no comment.
I would say the only issue is.
There's too many dog lovers and I'm not gonna get into this. Of everything in the world. I don't dislike dogs, I just think other people should be taken into consideration.
The only emails I got regarding dogs would be the East River Trail. Um, I think some of you have as well from some residents, um, regarding dogs and not being on a leash, et cetera. That's all I've gotten as far as communication regarding dogs. I've got nothing from Voyager, but I have on East River Trail. So I don't know how that falls into all this. The portion of the trail, is that?
Well, the East River Trail actually allows dogs on a leash. The problem that we have down at the East River Trail is because of its pristine and hidden nature, people think it's, oh, no one's looking at me, so they let their dogs run off the leash. Then Joe's driving around the corner with his bike and runs into a dog that's free running. So, I mean, you know, that, that is the concerns that we've had.
Other questions or comments? I do have elder person Levina first, then I'll go to Gans next.
So, when we talked about this, Marty, at, I think at Park Board, you mentioned it not being able to go into effect until fall, because you have to get all the signs, signage updated for the.
Well, I think we have to do an appropriate, um, reach out to our community so that they understand, um, what the ordinance is prior to us just putting a sign up. So I think we have to combine not only signs, but also social media, press releases, so that people have a, a true understanding before we kick it off.
So you're thinking like fall?
I don't know, I, yes. I don't think it's anywhere in the human possibility over the next month or so.
And, but I mean, once this ordinance is, uh, published and approved, it's, it's the ordinance, so do we hold off on publishing it and?
Do you want an effective date is what you're saying? Is that possible?
I mean, I don't need a.
It's possible. You could, Larry?
You could amend the language of the ordinance to indicate that it would be effective once we complete a public informational campaign and place signs in the appropriate areas. That way you don't need a date, you just need him to accomplish the task that he wants to accomplish prior to it being effective.
Can I make that motion?
It would, but could you repeat it again?
Yeah, that's pretty wide open. It would become effective once they've completed the public information campaign and have installed the appropriate signage.
Okay, thank you. So it could be sooner?
Two thousand twenty-eight.
Could be.
I was gonna say, well, just get a date.
Elder person Levina, were you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you, I need to make that motion to amend the ordinance.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second.
Is the motioner in second or okay with that, or do we have to?
She could just make a motion to amend it.
Yeah. Motion to amend it.
One, who wants?
Motion to amend.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion by elder person Levina, um, seconded by elder person Gans to, um, amend the original motion, so we have to vote on the amendment, correct? So we have a motion in a second regarding the amendment to the language. Any questions or comments regarding the motion to amend? Elder person Hanson.
That's not going in section thirty-two, though, thirty dash two, though, right?
I'm not sure how you place that.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, it's not.
I'm just saying that amendment doesn't really need to be part of the permanent ordinance.
No, it'd be part of section three of the ordinance. As it's drafted, so it doesn't go into the code.
Right, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Other questions or comments on the motion as amended? That said, all those in favor on the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go back to the original motion. Any other questions or comments? Elder person Gans, I think you had a hand up before.
Um, I did, yep. Have you had any other complaints from any of the parks? I know you spoke about Voyager, but how about all of the other parks which allow dogs? Have you had many complaints?
Honestly, the, um, East River is probably the number one complaint that we've received in our office. The other, I would say, top complaints we have received is from telling people they had, could not be in the park with their dog. So we receive very, so like Southwest Park, Jim Martin, um, I cannot actually even recall any complaints we received about dogs being in the parks, you know, or vice, you know, either which way. It's just telling people they gotta leave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifteen, resolution twenty-four fifty-eight authorizing amendment to Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources recreational boating facilities development renovation grant application for Perkowski boat launch fishing pier refurbishing.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion by elder person Carpenter, seconded by elder person Quigley. Discussion or comments? Do you have anything to, wanna add there? Seeing there are none, roll call vote, please.
Elder person Connerger? Aye. Levina? Aye. P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gans? Aye. Hanson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item sixteen, resolution twenty-four fifty-nine authorizing purchase of Forte Voice cloud phone system from camera corner connecting point in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars requested from unassigned reserves.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by elder person P Rock, seconded by elder person Connerger. Discussion or comments? Elder person Carpenter.
I'm sure Larry will give me the answer. Can you tell me why every year the savings they're gonna be saving can't be put back into the unassigned reserves?
Steve here.
Want my answer?
Yeah.
It really wouldn't make a difference, to be quite honest, because what you're gonna end up doing is rather than spending that difference that Steve talks about in here, an additional cost every year with the current system, instead you just spend that much less. And so you're just essentially having that much less on the levy go towards this or that much less for bonding and things, so it.
That's a good political.
One hand to the other.
Political answer there, you know what I mean?
It really would be irrelevant, I guess, at the end of the day.
The manager would've said something else. Steve, because, uh, you're alter, you've waited so patiently, are you okay with all that? Do you have anything else to add? Steve Massey's here.
Uh, I have nothing else to add, but, um, do want to point out that, um, this would be a shift from traditional on-premise phone-based system to a cloud-based system. Uh, and really the, the primary benefit is building disaster recovery, business continuity into the long-term plan of the city, so. Providing we have functioning internet, we should have functioning phones. Um, if we do, you know, if the unthinkable happens and we lose a city facility, um, we can then shift those voice communication calls over to mobile phones, um, tablets, um. Any, any, uh, PC that can connect to the internet would then be able to still function just like you are sitting at city hall regardless of where you're located, as long as an internet connection could be established. And then kinda to tag on to that as part of the twenty twenty-five budget, I'm also looking at adding a backup internet connection, um, so that we do have a, a failover plan, um, being that voice and email are our primary communication channels with the outside world. So we definitely wanna build that resiliency into our plan.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions or comments? Stop it. That said, roll call vote, please.
Elder person Levina? Aye. P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gans? Aye. Hanson?
Aye.
Connerger? Aye. I still like landline, though, but I'm.
I, I, but you're gonna, you're just gonna go with it, right?
I am. I'm gonna go with the flow.
Well, let's hope it works, and it's noted.
I tried really hard not to say anything, but it could.
All right. Uh, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Item seventeen, resolution twenty-four sixty, a res- a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of, in an amount not to exceed seven point nine million dollars, general obligation promissory notes, series two thousand twenty-four, and all related details. Pam?
So this was brought again to finance, uh, gone to finance twice now, the list of projects, uh, from our CIP that we included within our twenty twenty-four budget to borrow for. Uh, we have fine tuned that original list down to the amount that you see here. Um, there were some TID expenses that we've removed and we're gonna just use fund balance for those. So Justin is here from Baird to review what this parameters resolution is.
Thanks, Pam. It's great to see everyone again. So, um, I'm gonna cut this pretty short and sweet tonight. You know, we went through a lot of the details at finance committee, uh, but if there are any questions, don't hesitate to ask. So in the presentation packet that I sent, or that I handed out here, if you flip to page two, the structure here is gonna be a estimated size of the borrowing at seven million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's gonna be general obligation promissory note, so general obligation is your most secure type financing. It's an unlimited tax levy, so that's why you typically, when you go out to the market, you receive the lowest interest rate for this type of financing. It's gonna fund the twenty twenty-four capital improvement projects that were in the list Pam just mentioned. It's also gonna include some capitalized interest through twenty twenty-six for the TID number eighteen, uh, related projects, because again, for that's a newer TID, it's not gonna be generating the revenues for a couple of years. And so we're gonna be delaying, paying, repaying some of the, the debt for when the revenues start coming in on that debt service. This is gonna be maturing September one, twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-nine. First interest payment will be March one of twenty twenty-five and will be callable September one, twenty thirty-two, or any date thereafter. So again, that's when you can potentially look to refinance and, or pay it off if it makes economic sense to do so. The estimated interest rate is a four point two five percent. That, that is conservative. Um, you know, we continue to see news in, in the marketplace that the Fed is, is inching more and more towards potentially a rate cut here. And it's really being, starting to be baked into the cake, uh, in the marketplace as you're conce- continuing to see the stock market react as well as interest rates. So it's, it's a pretty volatile time every time, uh, economic news comes out or the Fed speaks. And then the, the parameter interest rate would be a not to exceed four point seven five percent. So if something came up between now and potentially going, jumping into the market, uh, you know, shot up interest rates because all of a sudden some economic news came out that was way, uh, you know, higher than anticipated and, uh, all of a sudden there are all these headlines that, uh, you know, inflation is, is back and it's, you know, creeping up, et cetera. Uh, you know, we may want to revisit and say, hey, is, is now the time to be jumping in the market or should we wait? Maybe things will cool down a little bit, uh, for a better time. Because it is very reactionary right now in the marketplace. So the tentative timeline, we talked about this last week at, at finance, where they approved to, to move forward. Uh, the preparations for the, the borrowing have been, uh, taken place over the last really month here, putting together official statement, the Moody's rating, we have that next week where, uh, myself, Pam, Larry, and Dan will all participate on the call and talk about, you know, all the, the great things happening in, in DePerey. We'll talk about the, the financial statements that were just, were just talked about, uh, what developments are gonna be coming in the, the horizon, et cetera, and then ultimately answer a bunch of their questions, and then they'll go to the credit committee and ultimately make a recommendation on the rating received. The current rating is a double A two, which is one of the strongest bond credit ratings you could receive. There's only two notches higher, um, and, and ultimately you would need to, uh, ultimately have your, your wealth levels in the community increase dramatically, or you have some crazy fund balance that, uh, you probably don't, uh, wanna have, uh, to, to get to that higher level. You're doing everything you can in your power, um, and, and that's why you're at the highest level that you're, you're at right now. So you're doing a great job. The city council considers the finance, uh, recommendation, proves the parameters resolution tonight, and again, the parameters resolution, uh, essentially gives flexibility in when we go into the marketplace based on when we're ready and when timing is optimal. It basically gives, uh, Pam, Larry, the mayor, the authority to sign off on sale if the parameters are met. Uh, so again, giving that flexibility of, of when we jump in. The targeted week is the week of August twenty-sixth, and if that, that occurs, we're gonna be looking at jumping in at some point during that week. And then the closing would occur September eighteenth of twenty twenty-four, so that's when you receive the funds. Page three, you've seen this, this graph in the past here, uh, this chart, but, you know, what this is really showing you is the black bars, that, that's your existing, uh, debt for general obligation debt being paid over time. So as you can see, it's, it's, it's reducing each year as you pay it down. The blue bars, that's what we're talking about tonight, so that's layered in. And then the gray bars, that's your remaining borrowing capacity that you have outstanding. So you can see that, you know, at the end of twenty twenty-four, you potentially are gonna have about a hundred and eight million dollars in available borrowing capacity. You're at a very healthy level. You know, Dan and I were just talking, we're, we're seeing, uh, potentially a nice growth again for the, for the city this year. Uh, you continue to expand, you, you know, it's a, it's a great community, people wanna, wanna be here. So your, your, your valuation has gone up almost a billion dollars over the last five years. So it's pretty impressive to see what, what the city has done. And, uh, again, municipalities are allowed to borrow up to five percent of your equalized valuation. Um, so when you, when you think about, you know, if you grew a hundred million dollars, that's essentially, you know, fi- five million dollars in additional capacity. If you, you know, and so if you grew ten percent this year on a three point three billion dollar valuation, that's a pretty significant jump in additional to your bonded capacity. And that's gonna be an important factor to as we continue to look to the future and future projects, et cetera. So you're in very good shape, uh, looking forward into the future, so good job.
All right, thank you very much. Questions or comments? Uh, elder person Hanson?
I just had a couple of questions, um, not for Baird, but on our, um, list of projects. Just wondering again what the TID eighteen land purchase was for one point five three three million?
Kinda your choice. You gonna stand?
How many mics do you need?
Yeah. Okay, time's up.
Uh, we have, um, uh, uh, city attorney and I are working on the first development agreement as part of that one, and as part of that one is purchasing right away, as part of our terms that we discussed last year with the ShopCo Group, purchasing right away for the future parking rent, purchasing right away for the future roads. All that, because we borrow once a year, we're sort of planning for it at this time, but we're hoping to bring to the council in the next month the first development agreement for that, which will outline those purchase prices.
And then also real quick, um, the non-TID notes, looks like they're all ten years and the TID notes are all fifteen years. Is, is that been the timeline we have been using?
No, we, we have been using ten years for, for everything. So, you know, in talking to Dan and Pam and Larry, you know, we decided that for these particular projects, based on, uh, it's TID seventeen eighteen, being newer TID districts, they have a life that goes beyond the fifteen years, that the fifteen years was the target to hopefully have it be paid off by then.
Okay. Makes sense.
All right. Elder person Quigley?
Yeah, from, uh, page two of the packet, Justin's packet, it talks about the parameters resolution, and then the, the folks with the sign-off authority, it could be the mayor, the city administrator, or the finance director. I'm assuming that would wanna be a, a consensus conversation and all three are in agreement, but is it possible that one person would say, we should make the decision now and then, is, is that dangerous to have that language, that you could have three different opinions?
Well, we're looking at each other right now, so.
It's, it's typically the finance director that would be, you know, I'd be working with to say, you know, are you available this particular day if we jump in?
Okay. Larry?
Well, we talk anyways, so.
Pam's going rogue.
It's a good question. Other questions or comments? All right, we would need, uh, we don't have a motion yet.
No, we don't have a motion.
I kicked at the number right away. Uh, we need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by elder person P Rock, seconded by elder person Gans. Any additional discussion and or comments? We have Justin and Pam there, and Dan, and Larry. All right, seeing there are none, roll call vote, please.
Elder person P Rock?
Aye.
Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gans? Aye. Hanson?
Aye.
Connerger? Aye. Levina? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Justin, thank you very much. You wanna just stay for the whole meeting, just to finish the whole thing or not? Thank you, though. Item eighteen, resolution twenty-four sixty-one authorizing purchase order, lease and government product lease agreement with Quadient, um, leasing USA postage meters, city hall, and municipal service center.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by elder person P Rock, seconded by elder person Carpenter. Discussion or comments? Seeing there are none, roll call vote, please.
Elder person Quigley?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Esther Khan?
Aye.
Gans? Aye. Hanson?
Aye.
Connerger? Aye. Levina? Aye. P Rock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item nineteen, resolution twenty-four sixty-two, common council authorization, informed consent and delegation to city attorney for consultation and collaboration with other municipal or governmental attorneys.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by elder person Carpenter, seconded by elder person Levina. Discussion or comments? So now you can talk with everybody. Seeing there are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty, appointment to the police and fire commission by Mayor Boyd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by elder person Levina, seconded by elder person P Rock. Discussion or comments for those at home? This will be, uh, Kristen Johnson, the former city attorney. Um, we did put on your, um, in front of you the bio for, um, Kristen Johnson. There's also a bio in the packet, but the one that you have in your, in front of you is a little more detailed, and I didn't get that until Sunday, so that's why you have that one.
Welcome back, Kristen.
Welcome back, Kristen, absolutely.
Yes.
All right, that said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Kristen, did I ask if she had to be here? And I said I'm batting a thousand percent for appointees, so she didn't have to show up, so.
Oh, wow.
Challenge accepted.
Fight for her position.
Challenge accepted, huh? Item twenty-one, future agenda items. Anyone have a future? Item twenty-one, future agenda items. Anyone have a future agenda item? If so, now's your time. Elder Person Hanson?
Just a friendly reminder about my item for discussion on the stadium, or sorry, the room tax.
Room tax. Very good, thank you. Other future agenda items or reminders? All right, that said, let's move to item twenty-two, which is at Dernment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Quigley, seconded by Elder Person Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for the long meeting.